Okay. Well, I think we have reached the appointed hour. So, I'd like to welcome everybody to the task team meeting. For the IR Plan, Parks and Recreation Section. And I'll call the meeting to order. And I'm assuming that we have Freedom of Information Act compliance?
Yes, we have.
Somebody's saying yes, that's perfect. Okay, so I'd like to welcome everybody. I would like to specifically welcome a new member, Arianna Pernice, with the Chamber of Commerce. All right, raise your hand, everybody sees you. There you go. Glad to have you. So Taylor, I'm assuming we would go next to citizen comments? I'm not sure how that works.
No, sir, Eileen will call roll. So this is virtual, we need verbal acknowledgement of the presence of the members in this meeting.
Sounds good. I'm a rookie.
Arianna Pernice?
Here.
Butch Casia?
Here.
Frank Sewell?
He's there, but he's muted. There he is.
We've got a lag time on my mouse.
Jack Daly?
Here.
John Brighton?
Here.
John Parsons?
He's muted.
Or he's frozen. Oh, there he is.
John Parsons?
Where'd he go?
Circle back.
We can come back.
Yeah.
Mary Hall?
Here.
Pat Zook?
It's terrible. I'm gonna come back and try to redo this and use my phone for the audio, because I can't hear a thing.
Okay, thanks, Pat.
And John Parsons?
Can't hear you.
Okay, there's Wes.
Okay. Wes Kitashima?
I'm mute, Wes.
Your audio's muted, Wes.
Try that. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Basically, he got the rules.
Yeah, all right, I think it's good.
John Parsons might have his volume down. Because he's talking, we can't hear him.
John, can you turn your volume up? Because you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you. John Parsons? So can't hear you.
I can't call him either.
Okay. That's all right. Let's keep moving.
Any changes to the agenda?
All right.
The same, okay.
All right, I think we're all right. Let's keep moving.
Okay. So next on the agenda would be citizen comments. I'm not sure how that works, so.
Sure. Just a second first. I just want to remind the participants in this meeting that it is being recorded and we're streaming live on Facebook. So, just a little reminder there. And for this meeting, since it's a virtual meeting, we won't have kind of the typical pop-up discussion for each agenda item. Butch will call on you for your comments. And if we need to go back around again, then we'll go back through the list of names again. Just so that we need to have some semblance of order in that regard. So for public comments, they were to be submitted electronically via the town's Open Town Hall portal. And that closed at noon yesterday. The comments we received were issued to the task group and have been made part of the record. And you guys may address any of those public comments when you're called on for each agenda item, if you feel the need to. Also, citizens had the option to request to call in. And we received no requests for phone calls during this meeting. So with that, we can move on.
Okay. I know we had some written comments. Now would be the time, if you want to talk about those comments, would that be correct?
No, we'll do that during the discussion for each agenda item.
Okay, so we'll go on to the new business, which is discussion about the final Parks and Recreation Master Plan?
Sure.
And, go ahead.
Yeah. I just have a few words to go over with you guys before we get started. Just to introduce this for y'all and bring you up to speed, as well as the public here participating in the meeting. So Loos Design was our Parks and Rec consultant. And they delivered the final draft of the Parks and Rec Master Plan in June. And that's what we're reviewing under this agenda item. And that includes their assessment of the Parks and Rec budget, staffing, maintenance, needs assessment, and gap analyses. So this document's intended to be informative, it's data-driven, and it's a starting point for a larger process that entails planning and development for the Parks and Rec system on the island. The town's overarching Parks and Recreation Master Plan is a multi-step process. So if you notice, the title for the Loos Report says Parks and Recreation Master Plan Part 1. As Part 1, it is laying the groundwork and provides research that is integral to taking the next steps towards progress for our Parks and Recreation. The graphic on page 3 of the agenda, it has the little green blocks that are all lined up. It shows how Part 1 fits into the bigger picture. So Part 2 is how this information will be incorporated into the town's comprehensive plan, which we will discuss on the next agenda item. The result of what will be in the town's comprehensive plan will be action items, goals, and strategies for Parks and Recreation. And that's based on review and recommendations from you guys, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the public. The Parks and Rec section in our plan then lays the groundwork for Part 3 of the process, which entails prioritization of projects, feasibility and funding analysis for projects, and policy and conceptual site planning. So that's when we're going to start getting into the details, and it's going to get really exciting. This will also be incorporated into the town's CIP process. And then finally, Part 4 will be the implementation, where we get to build some parks and initiate new policy. So all this to say, the report that we're discussing right now is the guiding document and the very beginning of what's going to be a really fun process. So before we get started, I want to thank all of you on the task group and the Parks and Rec Commission, our community members and interest groups for your contribution to this effort and the time you've spent working with us on this. And I hope you all stay involved through the entire process. So with that, thank you. And Butch, we can kick it off.
Okay, thanks, Taylor. One comment that I would make before we get started is, the way we've got this laid out, and Taylor went over that very well, is the master plan itself, I think if you look at it as the justification for what's going to go into the IR Plan, the Town's Comprehensive Plan section on Parks and Recreation, that's a good way to look at what we're doing. As we said in our first meeting, when we met, the nuts and bolts of what the town is going to do and how they make their decisions is going to be based on what's in the comp plan. Because that's the overall umbrella plan for the town. So that's where, when policy decisions are made and strategic decisions are made about what projects and that sort of thing, it's going to be based on what is in the comp plan. So I think if you keep that in mind as you look at the comments you make, that might be helpful. So with that, I'll go down the list and see if we have any comments. I'm not sure where to start, but I'm going to start with Wes. Wes, have you got any comments on the master plan?
I reviewed it. I think everything's very well organized. And I think it gives a good basis for our overall goal of getting different changes implemented. I really didn't see anything that I had conflicts with. I just had questions about the usage of, you know, for the mid-park area and what the ideas were behind that. I don't, because it wasn't real clear on what our future plan is for that. But I think everything else looked pretty good.
Okay. Yeah, I understand that. I think the mid-park, one of the things in the master plan is says, we've got several parks we're going to look at. But we've got to do specific site planning for each of those facilities. And I think when we do that for the mid-park, that's going to answer those questions that you're, I think you have in your mind. Same ones I have in my mind. So, all right, let's go to, the next on my list is Arianna. Do you have any comments on the master plan? Hi.
Hi. I don't at this time, but I've been reading all the documentation. But at this time, I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Then the next is Jack Daly.
Yes. Well, it's pretty basic and a good first step. You know, they apply standards against what we have in our inventory and expose some deficiencies. You know, like some of their remedies based on that. Consolidate your ball and bat sports into one area. And then, you know, add a couple more larger fields. Turf, of course, I like that. Hopefully, that's more than one soccer field's worth of turf. And it doesn't touch a lot of the bigger issues that I guess we'll pick up later envisioning. Like, some of the staffing recommendations are different than the ones in the IR Plan situation. And I thought it should have mentioned more about camping as a use for some of these park areas. And it would have been nice to see if they would have had some kind of, you know, what they do in Charleston County on James Island, where they have a water park and camping on maybe a 200-acre site. And it creates millions in revenue every year for their Parks Department, for the town. So I was hoping for some bigger recommendations. But for a start, it's good. I guess we'll bring those recommendations from our visioning group and from our Parks and Rec Commission for steps 2 and 3. We'll provide those ourselves, I guess. So, this is a good start.
Okay. Thanks, Jack. The next would be John Parsons. You might need to turn your volume up on your computer, John. Oh, we can't hear you. Can you hear us? If you turn the volume up on your computer, that might work. Oh, okay. All right, well, we'll pass John and keep going. I've got, so Frank Sewell? Do you have comments on the master plan? I know he's there somewhere. Frank Sewell?
Frank has a delay.
There we go. I've got mouse issues. So, I'm going to lighten up the moment here. First of all, I think the plan is very well laid out and certainly an excellent roadmap. And I agree with what your comments were earlier, the tying in with the comp plan and how that's going to create an avenue for us to move forward. Once again, it's a plan. I remember when we did a plan for the original Crossings Park, how that all changed and that master plan changing. So I know it's obviously, we're in much different times than where we were when all this information was put together. I think one thing, I'm going to go off topic here a little bit. But Butch, I think it'd be nice if you would make the announcement about the county and stuff like that. I know you and Jack have had some conversation where we are today. And Jack, you know, talked about working with Brightview. But I think that that would be good for the group to know. Because some of that is tied into what we saw not only as a master plan, but also in the comp plan. But overall, I think that we've had really good information that would have kind of helped guide us as we move forward, especially in the improvement to parks. And one other thing, and not the credit Mary Hall, Mary and I talked for about half an hour last night, but diving into the town's budget, there's $250,000, I believe, tied in to some type of development coming into this budget year. So they've already, town and town staff has already kind of tackled a little bit, a little ahead of the curve with what we have going on here. There's my two cents worth.
Thanks, Frank. And what Frank is alluding to is, I guess some of our work is paying off. Because as of July the 1st, maintenance of all parks on Hilton Head are now the responsibility of the town. And which gives, you know, a single source that you go to if you have issues and allows us to really work and have, I think, control over the level of maintenance that we have at our facility. So I think that's a great move. I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but I'm glad it did. So, anyway, so that's good news.
Does that include Barker Field, or no?
I'm gonna ask.
Butch, this is Josh Gruber. Let me jump in if I may.
Okay.
I was going to say, let's focus not so much on what caused us to get here, but let's focus on where we're at now. And you're exactly right. Where we're at now is the fact that the town has assumed all of the maintenance responsibilities for basically all of the county-owned or jointly-owned properties that are on the island. So that would include Barker Field as well. And we are working with the county now to hopefully facilitate the transfer of the titles to those properties from the county to the town, since we will be maintaining them and basically controlling the programming on them going forward into the future. But I think it's also very important to acknowledge, not only are we getting control over the properties, which I know has been a long-term goal of this body and of the town, but because of how this has come about, we also have funding available to provide the level of service that we believe is appropriate for those properties, which has always been kind of the big sticking point. So again, we're not going to worry about how we got here, but we're going to focus on where we are. And that's that we are going to have ownership and hopefully control of the properties. And we're going to have the sufficient funding necessary to maintain them to our expected levels going forward.
Thanks, Josh. Every time I hear something like that, I think of sausage. You don't want to know about it, you just want to enjoy eating it. So, okay, let's move on then. So, Mary? Mary Hall?
Yeah, oops. Okay, can y'all hear me? Yep.
Yep.
I think the master plan was very thorough. It did identify some things that we already knew. We already knew we needed some redos on some of our parks. New master plan for Chaplain. I'd like to maybe see talking about, I think, since there's changes for Crossings, maybe a new master plan for Crossings as well. And then down the road, I know that the Mid-Island Park will probably need a master plan. But, you know, it's touched on the need for nature-based recreation. And as it's going to be folded into the comp plan, it's going to be a good guide for us to work off of for the future. And I'm glad to hear that the maintenance and hopefully ownership issue of the county parks has been solved. So, that's a great first step forward.
Okay. Thanks, Mary. So, Pat? Pat Zook? I think you're next on the list.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Trying to get my stars and my fours all lined up here. I thought the plan itself was very good. Level of detail that I was looking for, anyway. I'll echo a lot of the comments that everyone else said. It'll be interesting to see what happens going forward. But I think it was a pretty good plan and everything's in shape. And I think this reflects more of the town of Hilton Head than the report we got at the last meeting with the, I think it was a, I forget, I think it was a Parks and Rec Commission meeting, where the Loos Group came in and gave their recommendations. I think this looks more like Hilton Head than they originally talked about. So I was pleased to see that.
Okay. All right. Trying to go down my list here. And I'm not sure. John, say, John Parsons, and then, let's see.
John Brighton.
John Brighton? Hi, John Brighton, are you there?
I am. I am here. I don't have any additional comments at this time.
Okay. All right, let's see, I've got, I'm not sure if on my list on my screen is folks to call on. I've got a, I don't know if this is people on the committee, or I don't think so. But they are folks that are listening or in on it.
Hey, Butch.
Who am I missing, I guess is my question.
John Parsons.
Right. So, yeah, so John, you're there, but we can't hear you.
Ask him to call on his phone.
John, we sent you an email with a phone number to call in. You can call from your phone and we'll be able to hear you.
Technology is a wonderful thing.
Well, while we're waiting, I can go ahead and kind of explain to you guys what the next step is with the master plan. So, we can't edit specifically what we got from Loos. That is their product, that's what we hired them to do. But staff can write a supplement based for it, based on recommendations that the Parks and Rec Commission will make for its adoption. So for example, the Parks and Rec Commission at their next meeting, or the meeting where they review the master plan, they will recommend that town council adopts it with a staff supplement addressing the following. So if there are things that there's concern about it not addressing, that folks, you guys or the commission thinks needs to be in there, then there's a way to address that. So, that's kind of the next step with this, is it will go to the Parks and Rec Commission for their review and discussion. So, let's see if we're ready for John. Butch, do you have any other comments you want to add about the master plan?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. One is, I think it's, you know, for what we went after to begin with, I think it's a pretty good plan. It's a great start. It gave us a lot of information to think about. And I think it served its purpose. There are a couple of things that I wish were in the plan or more strongly in the plan. The tying in between Parks and Recreation and cultural arts, I think is an important one. And that didn't seem to be really in there. And how I think the office, the Arts Office the town has, how that can really work with what we're trying to do with Parks and Recreation. And what I thought was kind of ironic was, the biggest thing we have going for us down here is the fact that we have all this water around us. And there's not a whole lot in the plan about water-based recreation. So I think that's also something that I wish had been in there, but that's something that we can work on at a later date. So, but other than that, you know, I think for what we're doing, it's a great start. And it's excellent information to back up the actions that we want to have in the comp plan. So, that would be it for me.
Thanks, Butch. John, we got you? Okay. Well, you guys did get John's typed up comments. And so, John, if it's okay with you, if we move on? Is that okay?
Right.
All right.
So I know we did get what John wrote and saw. I think they're excellent comments. So if that's okay, John, you nod your head. If it's all right, we'll move on to, let's see, a review of the, well, is there any, there's no action we need to take as far as the master plan? So we'll move on to the next item? Is that correct?
Is there anyone else who's had other thoughts that they want to add before we move on? Just wanted to, if you want to run through again. Did anyone, do we feel solid on our comments for this before we move on?
Is everybody okay to move on? A nod of the head, or would do great? There you go. All right. So let's go on then to the review of IR Plan Draft, Section 4, on Parks and Recreation. And we'll use the same, we'll go through the same thing. We'd like to hear your comments. And we'll start again with Dad, I mean Wes.
Hang on, first, I just wanted to say something quick, Butch.
Go ahead. I know, I jumped up.
That's all right. So, one of your roles, of course, was to be a part of the master plan process in that initiative with our consultant. But your other role in being on the task group is to help with the integration of that plan into the town's comprehensive plan. So in that regard, you guys are operating like one of our work groups that we've had for the core values in our plan. So just to keep that in mind, definitely want to hear your feedback. Where are the gaps? What's needed to be addressed in the comprehensive plan? That maybe, might not have been covered in the master plan as well, but we have the opportunity to cover in this next step in the process. So, our plan, if you recall from that graphic on page 3 of the agenda packet, is Part 2 of this process. So, thanks, Butch.
Okay. All right, so Wes, do you have any comments?
No, I'm actually good at this point. I mean, I had a big concern about the maintenance and taking that over, but that's been addressed and answered. So that's wonderful. I think that's a great step to get our functioning on the island more cohesive without so many moving parts, which is great.
Yeah.
So, I think that's huge.
Okay, thanks, Wes. Arianna, do you have any comments on the IR Plan Draft?
No comments at this time, Butch.
Okay. Thank you. Jack? Jack Daly?
Yes. I think it's good, just to be very specific when we talk about the recommendations and park metrics. We talk about a turf field at Chaplain. And I believe- in park metrics. We talk about a turf field at Chaplain and I believe the master plan said one and this, our plan says two. I'm not sure how you, how you count that out as like one super large turf field that can, you know, as big as two soccer fields. I don't know the exact, how they calculate like that. And, but, you know, you'd need more than one turf field, I would believe. And to nitpick again, if we take the three, the recommendation as I read it, the island inventory of youth softball and baseball fields is at six. Move the three from Barker to crossings and then it says add an additional two larger ones that, that work for older players with the, the end number is eight. And just, you know, so we don't get lost in the numbers there. That's, that's how I read it. I, I do like the visioning. I would like to see some, some more inclusion like Butch said about water. There's a recommendation for a pier in here. Also, you know, birding. We have a lot of rare endangered birds around the island. Perhaps we should reach out to Hilton Head Audubon to see how that is a passive kind of enjoyment of certain situations, maybe some properties we have that border, you know, the Martian and other areas could have some, you know, birding blinds, you know, and maybe we should reach out to them. So, I didn't see as much about nature as I would like. But I do like at the end, very end of this, the draft from our plan, maintenance and operations. I do like where it says, consider the addition of a town parks director position to kind of coordinate between all our groups. But, and not to knock any groups we have in existence or make them any smaller or less than what they are. But, you know, I kind of look at this visioning as a, perhaps a roadmap to Spalletto. How do we get there? You know, how do we use Low Country Celebration Park to have events that feed our whole island? How is that done? Who does that? Who gets us there? Who gets us Jimmy Buffett? Who gets us Paul Simon there? Is, is the chamber involved in this? You know, we've had a rough summer. A lot of businesses are down. We'll see a lot of businesses close right after Labor Day. They're limping through summer, not their fault. And we're going to lose a lot. And so, maybe we need to plan a way to leverage our parks and our facilities with help from the chamber and a town coordinator might help in this position to bring in events in the off season that, that draw people in those off season months. So, I, I would like to see that included as we come out of our plan about how we can use these things to benefit the whole island a little more. So, so I think the, our plan is very good. And, and I, I guess they, they really didn't, consultants didn't really tackle the big issues. They missed the water and they never really tackled the staffing and coordination issue. But, you know, if we aim to like, how do we get Spalletto to Hilton Head or Barbados has holder season, a whole season of entertainment when their island is usually quiet? That brings them a lot of, uh, that's where we need to aim at the end, besides just addressing deficits.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Um, let's see. Next would be John Parsons. I know it came here, John. I, I'm trying to remember everything that was, that you had in your comments. I thought they were all very good. One that I think it's kind of the, back to the master plan, but also I think is suitable for information for the IR Plan was your comment about having a, an additional classifications of parks for, for cultural, cultural use. I think that's a real good idea because there's some parks that we have that don't really fit the classifications and, but they're very important to the people on the island. And, and I think if we're looking to do that, we should, I mean, let's, let's classify things the way they are primarily so that we don't come back 20 years from now and, or 10 years from now and decide we want to change something that really doesn't or shouldn't be changed. So, anyway, I'm sorry, John, that you're, that we're, we can see you. Sorry, we can't hear you, but that's, that's the way it is.
Hey, Butch.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I have John's comments here, so I'll just add a few more of his bullet points for the benefit of our listeners.
Please.
So, he is, he is in favor of the recommendation for a town parks director. And to reemphasize what you said, that there's a lack of attention to cultural parks and other open space opportunities. He supports the recommendation from Loos to add a nature program staff position to enhance environmental education programs. And he wants to emphasize earlier comments from the master plan in his comment document here for Chaplain Park, Barker Field and the Mid Island to be done simultaneously so that the plan for where large sports fields, court, court facilities, things like volleyball, so that they can be holistically considered for placement. So, that's kind of done as a group there. So, that's, that's one of his strong recommendations and that feels that that should be addressed in the comprehensive plan. So, I think, I think that covers John's comments for our plan.
Okay. All right. Let's go with Frank Sewell. Frank?
Here we are. A little less lag time. So, you know, what Taylor just read in, read from John is certainly how I feel too. I mean, I'm going to re, you know, I don't want to repeat myself, but people have already commented earlier. I think the art plan is, once again, is a plan and that guides us to where we want to go and how we want to get there. And I think that, you know, we're going to have lots of stuff between the comp plan, art plan and the master plan to work back off, to feed off of each other as we continue to move forward in our community. And I think that's what we really need to figure out. And I'll have comments when we get to the comp plan stuff relevant to park usage and some other things. So, that's about it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, well, let's see. Well, right now, Frank, we are talking about the, the comp plan, the IR Plan. Do you want to go ahead and make your comments now?
Yeah, yeah. On the recommendation side of things.
Yeah.
On four seven, I think that with the takeover of the, not with the takeover, with us obtaining Barker Field. I think that that should, you know, once again, now we have access to a field that could be used in the summertime, could be able to allow us to do more sports activities and continue with camps as we cut down fields. And that was something that we had with the old rec center field. So, I'd certainly want to look at that as far as that goes. I know there's a, there's going to be adult softball somewhere over here and whether that's built into, as we expand the crossings park down there. But I think adult softball is something that the county, as one program the county did have the success with over here. And that needs to be part of consideration as we look to redevelop Barker Field. And Barker Field needs quite a bit of work, just to let everybody know. Old Schoolhouse Park, I think we can, until we can figure out, which is also maintained by both the town and county. Somewhere down the line, I'd like us to talk about maybe considering making those, dedicating those tennis courts to pickleball only until we get a pickleball facility. I know that's off in the future. There's lots of other things, but if we dedicated to that, to pickleball only, I think that we would, you know, would more, more people playing pickleball, especially now since we have Cordillo to feed off as an, as another location for public tennis. I think that ought to be rolled out as a consideration. Also, the pickleball facility, obviously it's chosen in the write-up here. It says Chaplain. I think that we know that we're going to do some master planning and how that's all working, but I think there's lots of opportunity to put multiple activities down there. I guess that the one thing is that I know John's on the special events, but I know that I've been working with the town on special events, applications, size of events and what those events would look like at Glengy Park and also at Delta Cove Park. So, I think there's going to be some opportunity to figure out what size events, what time of year they're, they're going to be held and those type of things. But there's a, a process right now where we're working with the cultural arts folks to evaluate the special events process and how that's all going to work. And a little bit, you know, we have a memorandum of understanding with, with the town to utilize facilities and schedule facilities. We already have that. The only group that really doesn't have an application and John knows this, doesn't have any type of agreement, is with baseball. We've been trying to get that done for a while. And now that we have the opportunity, because there was three parties involved, I think we need to develop a, a relationship with baseball sooner than later. Sometimes as we do our best, it's a parent-run organization, getting information and other things is, is, is a lot better this year than it has been in the past. But I think that there's something to be said about having facility use agreements, especially with parent-run organizations. So, there's a clear understanding, but you turn people over quite often. So, that's one of my comments. Obviously, we've talked about maintenance and we've talked about staffing. We've also talked about funding a little bit. I think the town's done a good job in the CIP budget to move forward and the development and planning. And then Patterson track that popped up on here, I'm really excited about that. I don't know if y'all drew it down there, but that's going to have awesome mini park view. Talk about water, but we have something here that has that opportunity, at least a water view. I also think Old Schoolhouse Park would have that opportunity on the front side. So, I think that, I think even though it doesn't say water specifically, I think there's opportunity in there to make that all happen. I know that we were, we were moving forward to, you know, get somebody onboard this fiscal year to figure out about the kayaking program. But we have had a very successful paddle boarding class and the woman that does that for us is looking to expand and do more out there. So, hopefully once a playground set in at the Long, Stelling and Rowling Center, we can continue to move that forward. As far as the parks, the town's parks director, I mean, that just creates a point of contact for us, a better point of contact. I think where there are opportunities, we can work together on the maintenance thing, having conversation with the baseball group and other things. And so, we have a clear understanding of how maintenance is going to work, especially now that I think we've gone, we'll go almost adding four different parks in the system. And I think that that's something that certainly needs to be done and have somebody that's dedicated there internally is, I think is going to be a, a good step forward. That's my two cents worth.
Thanks, Frank. All right. Let's see. I've got, got Mary, Mary Hall? You're still muted.
I have to do it on my iPad too. Okay. I just, yeah, I know. I'm still getting used to all these Zoom meetings and stuff. Really just reiterate, you know, some of what Jack and Frank and some of the others have said. But I was concerned, Jack, too, when I read this initial report and it seemed like they were talking about just the one field at Chaplain Park versus the three that we already have. But hopefully we'll get that straightened out with the new master plan. But now that the town will have ownership and control of Barker Field with their three baseball fields, that does give us a chance to really create a uniform baseball plan across the island for both the use of the fields, north and south end and under, you know, the scheduling, then we can do the scheduling better. And as Frank was talking about the memorandum of understanding, create facility use agreements with the, the user groups. And I think one thing the, you know, that the park and rec section of the comp plan talks about is creating maintenance standards and policies, which I think those are, that kind of rolls into that now. Those are probably needed now that everything will be located here finally. And I guess that's probably about it. The, I think probably pickleball needs to be addressed sooner than later. There's a need for that. I don't know if you would wait for the master plan Chaplain process or just be able to identify site and go ahead with that. And I think the one thing I was wondering about, which we've touched on a little bit, is how that town parks director position will be working with all of the different entities in the town now. So, was that initially Loos had identified a need more for, I think they could call them park maintenance supervisor. So, but it looks like that's an expanded position. And I guess this is a good start, kind of see how things will be working and just move ahead and move forward.
Okay.
That's about it.
Yes. Is that it? Okay. Thank you very much. I will move to Pat. Pat?
Yeah. The one thing that's kind of popping out to me through all of this and through reading all the materials is that the, the plans for ball fields and for one of a better term, I'll call them sports fields, whether they're football or soccer or whatever, is that I think we got to really be careful about how those things get planned out. I really like John's comments about that, but I don't even know that they went far enough. You know, we, we might want to even consider having, if, if the space allows it, and I'm not familiar with the size of everything, if the space allows it, you might have one park for baseball and softball and another park for football and soccer, just so they're in, so everybody knows if you're going to do this, you're going to go here. And if you're going to do this, you're going to go here. That's the one thing that sort of keeps popping up in my mind is that the, the field situation seems to be a little bit scattered. And then the other thing that I think is kind of the, the one thing, and I'm assuming part of the art, that the total art plan is there's a disaster team working on disaster response plans. But somehow we've got to reconcile the use of parks with this debris removal. So, those are the two things right now that, that kind of, that kind of stick in my mind as, as things that are, that are just sort of almost to the point where it's difficult to discern exactly what's going on with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Let's see. I guess for myself, I like what's in the, in the comp plan. And I guess going back on what stated in the master plan about sports tourism and that it, they weren't recommending sport tourism, but they were recommending high-quality fields and high-quality, you know, recreation spaces. The, you know, I hate to use the, you know, if we, if we build it, they will come kind of thing. But I think that if we, if we set our standards high enough, when we start looking at redeveloping these parks and building these fields and we do it at a high enough quality, not only is it going to be good for the folks that live on the island and are here and they're going to be enjoying those facilities, but we're going to be able to use those facilities to attract folks to come and spend a night or two in a hotel and have, and, and play in a tournament or something. I, I really believe that. So, I'm glad that even though the, the comments were not in favor of really promoting sports tourism, that building those facilities, I think is going to lead itself to that, especially in the off season. I agree with everybody else's comments. And so, with that.
Butch, John, John Brighton.
Who did we miss? John Brighton. That's right. I'm sorry, John.
It's all right. I'm, I'm, I'm going to keep it short. I think everything's kind of been covered that I was already, I really don't have.
Okay. All right then. Taylor, you have anything for us?
Um, just to see if anyone has any follow-up comments based on the discussion so far. Looks like Jack has his hand up.
Yeah. Just one little update about the memorandum of understanding. Jeff Riley from Riley's, he grew up here, played baseball here, all sports here, went to school here, is back. He's a contract and real estate attorney and he's on our HHPA board. He is negotiating with Scott Liggett about getting a memorandum of understanding between HHPA and the town. And he's pursuing that. He's a, he's an attorney and he grew up here. And so, he's got that well covered. And I think Scott is just very busy at the moment is why we don't have something like a finished agreement. But, so, so, so they are working on that. That's just a little update.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. All right. Well, with that, then we'll move to staff reports. And first is the next steps for the master plan. We kind of discussed that, but anything else, Taylor, you want to add? Hello?
I'm mute. The Parks and Rec Commission will get a memo in their agenda packet for their meeting about the master plan that will have consolidation. their meeting about the master plan, that will have consolidation of all of your comments about it today, and comments from the public as well, for consideration. So at that meeting, they'll make a motion, as I, as I said, to recommend adoption of the plan to town council with any other addendums to that. So, for our plan, with this document, just like the other work groups that I have been working with to develop our plan, I'll take your feedback from today, from this group, and I'll take feedback from the public to work on finalizing this section for our plan. And then that will move forward with the entire adoption process for our plan, which the development team will be meeting August 10th at 2:00 PM in a virtual meeting to kick off the adoption process. So, the draft of our plan will be made public in the agenda packet for that meeting at the end of this month. So, between now and then, we're kind of working on getting all that pulled together, and that's why we needed to meet now, so that I could get your feedback and, and input to finalize this section for the plan. So, all the meetings that are following up with that, for adopt, the adoption process, and the Parks and Rec Commission follow-up are going to be virtual until further notice, and they'll be livestreamed. And public comment will be the same thing, where you have until noon the day before the meeting to post your comments on open town hall, or request to call in the meeting to make comments. So, other than that, I don't have anything else for you guys. Thank you so much for being a part of this meeting today, and if anyone else has thoughts after this meeting, that, please just send me an email. I'm happy to do that, and I can share that with the rest of the group, just so you guys are in the loop. So, yes, sir.
Thank, thank you, Taylor. Before we leave, I think I'd be remiss to, if I didn't say thank you to each of you. We put a lot of work in pulling all this together, and, but we didn't do it alone. And I want to thank the town staff who put in countless hours in, in going over the plans and working on them, getting the IR Plan, where I think we are all okay with, with, with what's being presented in it. I appreciated all the public input that we got through the master plan process, and, specifically, I want to thank all the folks with the Parks and Rec Committee on the Greater Island Council, who did a lot of work in getting this kicked off to begin with, and getting it to the Attention to Council, to where they took the action they did to get this started. But I think this is a real community effort, and it's something that we're now honestly just getting started on. And if we can, if we can continue the effort that we've made, and if we do it right, this is going to be a great thing for Hilton Head. So, with that, I'll say thank you, and unless Taylor says no, I'm going to say that our meeting is adjourned. Okay?
You're good.
Okay. Thank you very much.